Test one, two. Good evening, welcome to the Revere Zoning Board of Appeals. If anyone could please stand and salute the flag.
Flag, allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call the members of the zoning board of appeals. Mr. Lemina?
Yes.
Here, Mr. Lopes. Here, Mr. O'Brien.
Here.
Here, Mr. Pelton.
Here.
Here, Ms. Pratt, the alternate member. Here, and Chairman Tucker.
Here.
Here, a forum is present. First application is A 2422, 1784 Holdings LLC, Scottsdale, Arizona, requesting a sixth month extension of the one-year exercise period from the zoning board of appeals associated with the granted variances of A 2327 to enable the appellant to raise the existing garage facility and associated structures and construct a new five-story self-storage facility with associated parking, pedestrian access, and vehicular access drives at 195 American Legion Highway.
Is the applicant present? Please press the microphone, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Larry Beals. I'm with Beals Associates, Two Park Plaza, Boston, Mass.
Anything, this is pretty much self-explanatory.
Well, I came with a long presentation, I've got a PowerPoint, but as I began to look at it, I thought, you know the project as well as I do, and I can either just summarize some succinct points, but basically, we need a little bit more time to finish the project.
Okay. It's a six-month extension. I'll ask if there's any proponents, anyone in favor, seeing and hearing none, I'll close that side of the hearing, any opponents, anyone opposed, seeing and hearing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. Any members wish to speak?
Motion to approve.
There's a motion on the floor to approve a six-month extension. Keep in mind, that's all you get, if after that, you'd have to reapply and everything.
I appreciate the encouragement, thank you.
Excellent, okay. Now, ask for a roll call, please.
Shall the zoning board of appeals grant a six-month extension for 195 American Legion Highway? Mr. Lemina?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Lopes?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
Yes, and Chairman Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, the time extension has been granted.
Thank you.
Next application is A 2423, this is a special permit on the application of Cody Gardner, 193 Rice Ave., requesting a special permit from the ZBA pursuant to Revere Revised Ordinance Section 1740040 to enable the appellant to modify an existing non-conforming two-family structure by constructing a 566-square-foot addition at 193 Rice Ave.
Is the applicant present? Okay, please step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Cody Gardner, 193 Rice Avenue, Revere.
My name is Michelle Ashkar, I'm from Ashkar Engineering, surviving place of business, 70 Washington Street, Suite 306, Haverhill, Mass.
Okay, do you wish to add anything, or does the application speak for itself, pretty much?
The application speaks for itself, I'm just here to answer any question that will arise from the board.
Okay, seeing that it's a public hearing, I will ask if there's any proponents, anyone in favor? If you kindly just have a seat and...
Hi, Angela Guerino-Suárez, Ward 5 Counselor. Rebecca Gardner has been a lifelong member of the Point of Pines, she's lived there her entire life, her and her husband are expecting twins, and I would have no problem supporting an addition to the home where she grew up to raise her children there, and I have not heard anything from any abutters negatively in reference to this, so I have no objections. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents, seeing and hearing none, I'll close that side of the hearing, any opponents, seeing and hearing none, I'll close that side of the hearing? Any members wish to speak?
Motion to approve.
There's a motion on the floor to approve, ask for a roll call, please, with our standard conditions.
The zoning board of appeals standard conditions are as follows: if the rights authorized by this special permit are not exercised within two years of the date of the grant of this special permit, the right shall lapse. This special permit should not be valid until the appellant has recorded this special permit and plan in the Suffolk County Registry of Deeds and submits document recording numbers and dates to the City Clerk and Building Inspector of the City of Revere, and the appellant must receive site plan review approval prior to applying for a building permit. Shall the zoning board of appeals grant the special permit subject to those conditions? Mr. Lemina?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Lopes? Yes. Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
Yes, and Chairman Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, the special permit has been granted. Next application is A 2424, Zapage Development LLC, 78 Mill Street, Middleton, requesting a variance of Revere Revised Ordinances Section 1728020 with respect to minimum parking requirements for apartment use in the GB District to enable the appellant to construct a 48-unit residential apartment building with 42 parking spaces at 791 Broadway.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Mario Zapage. I'm here for 791 Broadway. It's a 48-unit building, approved with 50 parking spots. I'm here today to ask for a variance to remove the parking stackers from this development. Right now, the parking with the 50 stock, it has 50 spots, with the 42 parking spots, eight are stackers. We have 36 one-bedrooms, eight studios and four two-bedrooms. So, the six studios are not going to have parking when they're going to put in the lease and make sure they don't get a sticker on the city.
Okay, is there anything else we wish to provide, or no? Seeing that this is a public hearing, I will ask if there's any proponents, anyone in favor? Ward Counselor wish to speak?
Good evening, again, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. When I got the phone call from Mario letting me know that he wanted to get rid of the stackers, I was ecstatic, because I believe that they are dangerous. Stackers create a lot of headaches when they are not maintained properly, and they're very difficult to maintain. We've had this conversation before. Learn, people need to learn how to operate them properly, and they can't do that at times. And if your vehicle gets stuck, then you're stuck, and that means every car that needs to get out after you is stuck. So, you're creating a ton of traffic. That happened to me and my mom in Boston. Not to mention that if you have an electric vehicle, and an electric vehicle were to catch on fire, it could be deadly. Fires are very difficult to extinguish in an electric vehicle, as everybody knows, because they keep relighting. Imagine if your cow was stuck on top. If the stacker would get stuck, that would create a huge traffic jam, and if one person can't get out, neither can anyone else. Stackers are noisy, which would be annoying to the residents that actually live there or the surrounding residents. I have spoken to neighbors that were for removing them and against removing them, but most of the people that I spoke to that were against were worried about parking. Now, I was just on the phone with the Director of Parking, and that's not going to be the case. If the developer is granted the removal of these stackers, there will be no parking issued to, no parking...
For a point of clarification, they couldn't get stickers the last time.
Exactly, they can't, they will not be able to get a sticker nor a visitor parking as well. When he purchased this, he purchased it with the stackers, he does not want them. The apartment building doesn't have any three bedrooms, it only has a couple two-bedrooms, a single one-bedroom and then studios. It's right on a bus route, and the amenities are all around it, they're all in walking distance. The developer also has agreed that he will put in the lease that the person moving in will not have a vehicle. So, I feel confident and I feel comfortable allowing these stackers to not happen, because I, again, I do not like them, and I recommend that this honorable body give him the variance. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing and hearing none, oh? Any opponents, anyone opposed? Please step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Christine Robertson, I reside at 187 Charger Street here in Revere. I just want to make a point. The point is, if you give this variance, how about all the other apartment buildings that have already put in for stackers and have been approved? You're setting a precedence by allowing this variance, and I think you need to give that some thought. Thank you.
Are there any other opponents? Anyone else opposed? Seeing and hearing none, I'll close that side of the hearing, any members wish to speak? Is there a motion?
Yeah, I have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve? That would have our standard conditions along with the lease restriction as well as no visitors' parking or residential parking. Well, that's them, they said it, that's not us, but okay.
The standard ZBA conditions to be added to the decision if approved are as follows: if the rights of this variance are not exercised within one year of the date of the grant of this variance, the right shall lapse. This variance shall not be valid until the appellant has recorded this variance and plan in the Suffolk County Registry of Deeds and submits document recording numbers and dates to the City Clerk and Building Inspector of the City of Revere. The appellant must receive site plan review approval prior to applying for a building permit, and this property shall not be eligible for participation in the City of Revere's residential and visitor-on-street permit parking program. Shall the zoning board of appeals grant the relief requested subject to those conditions? Mr. Lemina?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Lopes?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. O'Brien? Yes. Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
Yes, and Chairman Tucker?
No.
No, the variance has been granted.
Next, calendar item number?
Next application is A 2425, Billiken Investments LLC, 407 Proctor Ave., Revere, requesting the following variances of the Revere Revised Ordinances to enable the appellant to subdivide existing Lot 557 at 87 Derby Road into new proposed lots, Lot A, Derby Street, and Lot B, Derby Street, I'm sorry, Derby Road, I should say Derby Road, for the purpose of constructing a new single-family dwelling on proposed Lot B, Derby Road, Revere, Mass. Revere Revised Ordinance Section 1724010 with respect to minimum area requirement of 8,000 square feet within the RB District for proposed Lot B, and Section 1724010 with respect to minimum frontage requirement of 80 feet for proposed Lot A. Minimum front yard setback requirement of 20 feet for the proposed structure on Lot B, proposed Lot B, and minimum rear yard setback requirement of 30 feet for the proposed structure on proposed Lot B, and maximum principal building coverage requirement of 30 percent for the proposed structure on Lot B.
Good evening, state your name and address.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the board. My name is Nancy O'Neil. I am an attorney with D'Ambrugio LLP located at 14 Proctor Avenue. I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant, Billiken Investments LLC, owner of 87 Derby Road, and I am joined here tonight by Mr. Richard Damiano of Billiken Investments, a City of Revere resident, as well as our architect, Mr. John Lloyd of JPL Consulting. The proposal here tonight is for the subdivision of the 87 Derby Road property, which is a large corner lot, into two lots. We recently submitted plans that confirm the dimensions and architectural elements of the proposed project, which we also have printed here. So, the 87 Derby Road lot, while a large lot, has a unique shape with six sides and an irregular corner at the intersection of Derby Road and Grover Street. The challenging shape of this lot complicates the division of the lot, as well as the placement of buildings and pertinent parking areas. So, this proposal is for the division of the lot into two modest lots, the first lot being around 8,300 square feet, which is sufficient in the RB District where the property is located, and the second lot being around 4,300 square feet, which is undersized for the RB District but similar in size to neighboring lots. This is a lot division, I would just like to highlight that sufficient access to each property exists. So, this lot is particularly well-suited to a subdivision of this type, as the existing two-family has two driveways, and the new single-family would be a corner lot with a large side yard, so no problems with access would exist. But to get into the specifics of this proposal, the first lot, the 8,300-square-foot lot, would contain the existing two-family residents with the requisite four parking spaces. No changes are planned to that residence. As part of the proposal, the residence would remain a two-family with four parking spaces. The second lot, the 4,300-square-foot lot, would contain a new single-family residence with the requisite two parking spaces located in a two-car garage. So, the proposed single-family residence, which you can see here, has been oriented towards Grover Street. So, it has been oriented that way to maximize setbacks from neighbors, as well as maximize the distance from the intersection of Derby and Grover for driveway safety purposes. So, overall, we are proposing a modest single-family home around 2,300 square feet with sufficient parking that is being oriented away from neighbors. The existing two-family, which has sufficient parking, is not being changed. So, we do not expect any parking, traffic, or neighborhood impacts here. The new single-family home fits with the size and scale of the neighborhood. As you can see here, it is an attractive new residence that would take the place of an underutilized large side yard. And in today's housing crisis, the creation of new, non-impactful, family-oriented housing such as this is particularly important. And for these reasons, we would respectfully request that the ZBA approve the variances to allow this worthy project to proceed to construction, and we are happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing this is a public hearing, are there any proponents? Anyone in favor? Seeing and hearing none, I'll close that side of the hearing, any opponents? Anyone opposed? Seeing and hearing none, I'll close that side of the hearing? Any members wish to speak? Attorney, come up here for a second, let me show you something. Yeah, I'm a little confused there. So, that's the existing, right?
That's correct.
This is the proposed single?
That's correct.
And this is the proposed single?
No, this is, uh, this is the yard, nothing but...
Could you ask the question on the mic, is this regarding the garage in the back? Right where that garage is, I wanted to know if that... Because that says 4,364 square feet, but then I see a wall where the proposed single-family is, but that's one big lot, that's just a side yard?
So, this space between the part of the structure marked "two-car garage"? If I put it that way, is that better? Okay. So, here's a single-family, this would be the new lot line over here. So then, we have the proposed single-family, a two-car garage behind, and then this entire area, this would be the side yard with a 39-foot setback to the neighboring property. And this freestanding garage over here, that's an older structure, that would come down.
Okay, yeah.
So, it's just one, one single-family, this area would, this wouldn't be occupied by any structure, this would just be a yard.
Thank you. My only comment is just that I'd like the parking spaces on the plan depicted with the sizes before you, if you were to have this voted on, please have that done before you submit the plan to the Registry of Deeds, that's all. Motion to approve on the floor? As for a roll call, with our standard conditions?
The standard conditions of the ZBA are as follows: if the rights authorized by this variance are not exercised within one year of the date of the grant of this variance, the right shall lapse. This variance shall not be valid until the appellant has recorded this variance and plan in the Suffolk County Registry of Deeds and submits document recording numbers and dates to the City Clerk and Building Inspector of the City of Revere, and the appellant must receive site plan review approval prior to applying for a building permit. Shall the zoning board of appeals grant the relief requested subject to those conditions? Mr. Lemina?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Lopes?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
Yes, and Chairman Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, the variance has been granted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next application is A 2426, Shari Murray, 41 Irving Street, Revere, Mass., requesting a variance of Revere Revised Ordinances Section 1724010Y with respect to maximum height requirement of 30 feet to enable the appellant to construct a second floor with a walk-up finished attic on an existing two-family dwelling at 41 Irving Street.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, my name is Attorney Larry Simeone, I have law offices at 300 Broadway, Suite 4, Broadway, Revere. This evening, I represent Shari Murray and her mother, who are the owners of the property, 41 Irving Street. They seek a variance, and variance deals with their particular project. Their project, we'll start off with the property. The property consists of Lot 261, which is 4,000 square feet, the lot depth is 100 feet, and the 40 feet of frontage. The property also is a two-family, an existing two-family home with 1.5 floors. The project seeks a variance to allow the owners to add two, a second floor with a walk-in unfurnished attic, which is depicted in Exhibit 2 and shows as Exhibit A 2-1, the proposed addition. Proposed addition is 32 feet. As the existing lot is less than the 5,000 square feet required by 1724010Y, it cannot meet the zoning requirements and therefore needs a variance wherein the project now has a proposal before this honorable body of 32 feet. Essentially, looking at the project itself, the respecting enforcement of the provisions herein is the failure on the part of the applicant to comply with 1724010Y, which is directly related to the topography of the conditions set forth above. The applicant argues that should the variance be, the variance should be granted, there shall be no change to the neighborhood. The appellant argues that, given these facts, as a result of the granting of the variance, that will be without substantial detriment to the public good. Wherein the existing dwelling shall be in compliance with the existing use regulations in the RB District, and the failure on the part of the applicant to comply with 1724010Y is directly related to the topography of the conditions set forth above. The appellant argues that the granting of the relief shall not nullify the substantial, or substantially derogate from the intent and purpose of the zoning bylaw. I don't see any questions, Mr. Chairman, you have any members have?
Thank you. Seeing that it's a public hearing, are there any proponents? Anyone in favor? Seeing and hearing none, I'll close that side of the hearing, any opponents? Anyone opposed? Seeing and hearing none, I'll close that side of the hearing, any members wish to speak? Motion to approve on the floor, with our standard conditions. Roll call, please.
Standard conditions are as follows: if the rights authorized by this variance are not exercised within one year of the date of the grant of this variance, the right shall lapse. This variance shall not be valid until the appellant has recorded this variance and plan in the Suffolk County Registry of Deeds and submits document recording numbers and dates to the City Clerk and Building Inspector of the City of Revere, and the appellant must receive site plan review approval prior to applying for a building permit. Shall the zoning board of appeals grant the relief requested subject to those conditions? Mr. Lemina?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Lopes?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
Yes, and Chairman Tucker?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and the members.
Next, calendar item number, please.
Next application is A 2427, 125 Squire Road Real Estate Holdings LLC, Joel Said, Swampscott, Mass., requesting the following variances of the Revere Revised Ordinances to enable the appellant to construct an additional 56 hotel rooms to the rear of a hotel currently under construction at 125 Squire Road. 1724010, respect to rear yard setback, respect to FAR, and respect to minimum parking requirements.
Lou McCarkiss, Seaport Landing, 152 Linway, Lynn, Mass. Thank you, members of the board, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We want to thank you for sharing our vision and the important facts surrounding the new improved proposal to expand the hotel at 125 Squire Road, which we will need your help with. As you may recall, the site was previously the Papagino site, consisting of more than one acre, 45,738 square feet, and was previously permitted by right because of the, it met or exceeded all the requirements regarding setbacks, parking, et cetera, to construct the hotel. Well, now that, and that was many moons ago. And now that times have changed, and we have found that the demand for hotel rooms, especially in Revere, is through the roof. After careful consideration, deliberation, many meetings with city officials, and some of our outreach efforts to the neighborhood, we have before you our improved proposal, which includes 56 rooms. It would be the same height, four-over-one, with 75 parking spots. After we listened to concerns of elected officials, site plan review members, members of the administration, and various stakeholders and abutters, and I'll just give you a quick example. At site plan review, the deputy fire chief was very concerned about the ingress and egress of the fire trucks as they approached the building. He wanted to make sure they could navigate the site, just in case, in case of emergency, they had to get their ladders up to the fourth floor and so forth. So, we listened to those concerns, and we tweaked the original proposal to mitigate that impact, and the site plan review members, and particularly the deputy chief, were satisfied. Uh, next slide. Okay, not a... Not a big deal, we can, all right, no problem. And what we had was the original approval, um, the second... So, on the parking plan, you'll see the original 100 rooms, you'll see the addition of the L-shaped room count, same height, and you'll see the parking underneath, so it's the four-over-one. When we heard about the concerns about the on-street parking, which, Macomba, is that how you pronounce it? Macoba, thank you. So, what we did was, there was general concern on that, about tenants that live in those apartments that were worried about coming home and not having parking. So, what we committed to with respect to the hotel, every single member or guest that comes, there'll be a sandwich board at the check-in counter, they'll be handed a piece of paper that basically says, "Any parking outside the hotel site that is off-site, you'll be towed." So, there's no parking off-site, we're going to make that very clear, and we need to make that commitment to the abutters. One of the requests from the local councilors had to... One of the requests from the local councilors had to do with one or two spaces in case of emergency for some of his constituents. So, we agreed, if necessary, on an emergency basis, to dedicate one to two spaces for the people on Macoba or anybody in those surrounding apartments. When we heard about the concern about the shadow studies, so, our architect performed the shadow studies, and as you will see in your file, at any time, there are no shadows, any time of year or any month, there'll be no shadows on the abutting properties, which was a concern. In your packages, we're happy to expand on the particulars. We put a traffic study that shows that 39% of the public that goes to the Sheridan Four Points, for example, which is less than a quarter mile, is really generated by airport traffic. So, 39% of those people actually drive. The other 60% to 70% Uber, Lyft, and other sources to get to the hotel. The other letter came from the onsite general manager when we wanted to substantiate the facts on the difference between the 100 rooms and 156 rooms with respect to revenue to the city. So, that hotel, if approved, that excess room to 156 would be somewhere between $250,000 on the low end and $500,000 on the high end, give or take $330,000 is what the Sheridan Four Points, I believe, paid last year. And that is on, in the file that you have. So, we have the owner here, we have the architect here, and some of the supporters that have either worked for Jules or are involved from a business standpoint on Squire Road. We'd be happy to answer any and all questions, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to open it up to proponents. If you have spoken in before, and you're going to be saying the same thing about the hotel, there's no reason for you to get up. If it's something new that you want to add, please, I welcome you up to the microphone. You'd have to state your name and address for the record. Any councilors wish to speak? Good evening, councillor.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Anthony Zambuto, 87 High Street, Revere. I've been on the council, I think, 25-plus years. I think I'm the biggest proponent for hotels of anybody. I've been the cheerleader. The only one that might have beat me was former councillor Powers, who was a cheerleader for hotels. And why? Hotels bring the biggest amount of revenue to the city for the least amount of services. Hotels don't require any services. We don't pick up their trash, they keep their place clean. It's like a gift to the city coffers. That's why I always supported every hotel that ever came before us and helped them in any way I could to get it to be a done deal. That's my reason for being such a cheerleader. But this particular project I looked at, and I did a, you know, an analysis of the 56 extra rooms, really requiring very little relief for a big gain. My back-of-the-match book was more like $450,000. Maybe I was being a little over optimistic. Maybe that's too many, asking for too many rooms a year. But the ballpark is definitely in the $400,000 range. And like I said, the project really doesn't ask for a lot of relief. I don't want to get into all the, we've forced the owner to have six shuttles and all kinds of stuff like that. So, there'd never be a problem with the minor relief for the parking, or, for that matter, any of the variances asked for here. So, I'm a big supporter for this, and I would ask you to please support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councilors wish to speak?
Councillor Angelo Guerino-Sowaya. I'd like to echo what my fellow councillor, Zambuto, said. Mr. Markeakis was talking about the revenue of what it would bring in to the excise tax revenue that would come in to the city each year. It's about $400,000. It's 6.5% times $350 a room per night, times 56. It equals out to a $400,000 in revenue. This is the best kind of commercial business for the city of Revere. There's little to no impact on city services, such as the trash, the fire, the police, and the schools. That's number one, the schools. We can't take much more in the schools. It's awesome for the economy, and it also will employ a lot of people. So, I'm in favor of this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Anyone in favor? Kindly step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, good evening, everybody.
Push the mic up. There you go.
My name is Santosh. So, I'm the general manager of next, next to his neighbor. So, it's good for the business for the Revere. So, we get more business if we get more rooms in Revere, the hotels and everything. It's always busy place in the square road. So, we support with them. So, we always for the good business for them and for us. So, we support for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Could I have your address, please? Are there any other proponents? Anyone else wish to speak? Please step up. Proponent, proponent. Good evening. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Elias Fafui. I live in 44 Chamberlain Avenue. I do know Mr. Jules for a long time. He's in favor of employing more employees. Definitely will increase more traffic, definitely will help local residents and employing them. Mr. Jules, he is a good businessman. He's for the community before he takes office. So, I'm in favor.
Thank you. Any other proponent?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Andrew Malley, from 180 Norfolk Avenue in Swampscott, Massachusetts. I've been known, Mr. Said, for about six years now as a neighbor and as a businessman. And all I can tell you tonight is, in a request like this, you got away, like, the benefits and the risks. So, do we benefit from this request, or there are actually more risk actually by approving it? And actually, I believe that actually there are more benefits. As the previous speakers actually stated, is that the majority of the customers, they come from the airport, the revenue for the city, actually, they stay locally in Revere, they don't actually go in other cities, jobs. And from my acquaintance with him, actually, from all these years, all I can tell you, actually, he has an impeccable record as a businessman, as a family man. He always does what he stands for. He has actually a great record as a businessman with the previous businesses that he actually, he has locally. I can mention Sheraton and La Quinta. So, even though that you might have those dots, that, I mean, even with the minimal conditions, actually, he will do anything to actually satisfy those. So, I'm actually all for it, actually. So, I ask the board to approve his request.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Seeing and hearing, and I'll close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Anyone opposed? Kindly step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the Board. My name is Christine Robertson. I reside at 187 Charger Street. I stand before you as a resident of Revere for well over 45 years. I have seen the growth of Squire Road over the years, and I, as well as every neighborhood along Squire Road, has endured the increased traffic, noise, congestion, trash, and foot traffic through our neighborhoods. The current construction project at 125 Squire Road takes up just about the entire footprint of the property. Where is there room for an additional 56 rooms, which will increase this tremendously? And where are the patrons going to park? Which has been answered. My understanding is that this developer is the same developer that will build a boutique hotel not 100 yards from this current project. Please correct me if I am misinformed. When will they be before the board to appeal this increase in size also? You must realize that Squire Road is not the place to continue to allow business and corporations to expand on what they have originally been granted. It is so greedy of one to be granted a permit to build and then to appeal it to make it even larger than originally proposed. Why aren't they ever satisfied with what they have been given, always having to push the envelope? My hope is that you will start saying no to these requests and think about the detriment to the people who endure the aftermath of these projects every day. Squire Road is not the Atlantic City boardwalk. When does this stop? Please realize that there will be five hotels within one mile between Squire Road and American Legion Highway. This does not include the Comfort Inn near Bell Circle. That will only increase the traffic, noise, congestion, traffic, and foot traffic in the area. How many of you live close or live in the area of Squire Road? We endure this every day. If you don't, perhaps you should sit at Brown Circle or at the intersection of Squire Road and Charger Street and watch the traffic, listen to the noise, watch the people throw their trash on our yards and other goings-on daily. The traffic from 1:30 PM until past 6:00 PM on American Legion Highway and Squire Road is gridlocked. We don't need anymore to address, anymore to add to the mess that we live with every day. It seems that the developers that come into this community are hell-bent on destroying the city. Perhaps it is time for them to take their development into their own communities. Let's see how far that gets them. As the saying go, a beer does not defecate where it eats. Perhaps it's time for developers to stop defecating all over Revere and eating their filet mignon somewhere else. Thank you for listening.
Are there any other proponents? Proponents? Opponents? 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 Okay. All right. Originally, I welcomed the 100-unit hotel because it really improved a site that was awesome, and I saw. The Papagino site was abandoned and ugly and for a long time. So, the 100-unit project, I was satisfied with. I'm a bit confused, and I'd like to try and get a few answers, and I think it would help clarify it for me and hopefully other people in the audience. The structure of the building is already up. The additional 56 rooms, would that be an additional floor or an addition to the back? Or are they already included in the existing structure? So, what does that addition, the existing structure, does it include 100 rooms or 156 rooms? Could you answer that?
Okay. If you want to ask any other questions?
Please do so now, so they'll answer it all at the end. All righty. So, that's question number one. I did a cursory review of the site plan, and one of the areas for relief they're looking for is to reduce the rear yard setback from 30 feet to 20 feet. When I look at the site plan, in the rear yard, to accommodate the existing 75 spaces, there's 45 feet between the back corner of the building and the back property line. So, I need, so, they're showing 45 feet, and they're requesting a variance from 30 to 20. So, I'm just trying to make one-on-one equal to, and they probably have a good answer for it, but if they could clarify that, I'd appreciate it. Thirdly, as the largest abutter, I've never been contacted by the owner or the developers or the builders of the project. I have encountered some issues. When they were on the foundation stage, we got a lot of rain, and when they de-watered the site, they flooded my parking lot and all of my catch basins. They also flooded Macoba Street and the catch basin at the corner of Macoba Street and Ward Street, and the DPW had to come down. The construction site, I've been in the construction business my entire life, I wouldn't call the most orderly site. So, I've never been contacted. My initial interaction with the company has not been favorable. I believe the increase from 100 to 156 is too dramatic, and the parking variance, you're basically ignoring all of the rules and regulations that were put in place to safeguard a development that will not cause issues. So, when it went through original site plan review, in my estimation, I've been through site plan review probably 20 or 30 times, the entire site has, the entire application with this addition would have to be reviewed. There's an impact on water, on sewer, on parking, on traffic. Maybe they've already done that through site plan review. I looked at the file, and I did not see a site plan review approval letter, the original one or a revised one. So, at this stage, there are some questions, and if it's possible, if we can get those few basic questions answered, I think it would help clarify it, not only for me but for the board. Thank you. Are there any other opponents? Anyone else oppose? Seeing and hearing, and I'll close that side of the hearing. Does the applicant wish to explain, get up and explain, answer those questions before it gets taken to a vote?
Yeah, we checked Lou Macaracus, 152 Linway. We checked on the abutters list and reached out. I apologize, quite frankly, not for coming to visit you myself. But those are questions that should be answered. I think there are reasons for each. I don't know if we could blame that site for flooding on Macoba on that, but we can look into that. With respect to the certified site plan, the original, we're happy to provide that to him. One little side note, the landscaping company in the back is actually encroaching on our property five feet. Doesn't sound like a lot, but we made an attempt to maybe help relocate them, it'd be much better, but there's a five-foot encroachment in the rear. The gentleman had all legitimate concerns, and I think that he needs to be educated on what the reality of this is, and hopefully will gain his support. And I'd like to meet with him anytime.
I'd be happy to sit down and go over those questions so that it's clear to everyone what we're either approving or disproving. And so, I would respectfully request that this be postponed for a week or whatever your schedule allows. I'm available anytime to meet and try and get a better clarification of the project, and then report back. So, I'm not sure how you'd like to handle it from this stage. You looked at these plans that they're presented tonight? Have you come up and taken a look at these plans at the city clerk's office? Yes, I looked at, I have a copy of the file with me, but it wasn't, it wasn't, maybe not complete. As a developer, I'm surprised that you wouldn't know that the addition is an addition to the property. So, I'm confused on your comment. What's confusing is that the entire superstructure of the building has been built. The entire concrete structure of the building is erected. Correct. And they have to erect the additional structure as it's on the plan? I haven't seen that plan. So, I, maybe in the file that I got from the clerk's office. It is. It is. I think it's very clear to us as members, and I believe most of the audience knows that that's an additional structure. Okay. And is that, where is that structure being built? Yes, it's in the file that you obtained. So, that's my most confusing. The file is the same file that you picked. All right, you'd have to get back to the microphone. With that addition in the back of the property, where were the, originally, in the site plan I'm looking at, shows parking at the rear of the site. So, that's a raised structure with parking underneath it, as depicted in the picture there? Well, I don't have any, you know, I'm just looking at a site plan, so I can't really discern that. discern that. But they had the pictures presented, but it is depicted as with a raised structure. It, so to answer your question, as far as parking, the parking would be under the building. It's a raised structure. Okay, all righty. Well, I guess. We can put it back up on the screen, but it is a raised structure. All right. I, you know, unfortunately, the file that I had did not include that, so I apologize for that. The, well, in conclusion, I think the increases are too intense for that site, and that's my opinion, and I hope you take it under consideration. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions that need to be answered, or are we all set with that? Any members wish to speak?
Yeah, I'd like to say that I agree with councillors Guerino and Zambuto, and I'd like to make a motion to approve.
There's a motion on the floor to approve? We did have conditions on the last one, and they would continue on with this one as far as, there was one concern that was employee parking, and I believe that that was addressed that with the shuttles, if there was a need to transport employees to another parking lot, that that would be accommodated. Am I correct? I see the gnaw of the head, so that, that. Any other concerns? I believe the shuttles were all listed by the councilors, that those concerns were raised, and I think they went up to six shuttles now, which I thought was crazy, but they are. Is there any other questions? So the roll call's on. And ask for a roll call, please.
Subject to the conditions, Chairman?
Yes.
The conditions, the standard ZBA conditions are as follows. If the rights authorized by this variance are not exercised within one year of the date of the grant of this variance, the right shall lapse. This variance shall not be valid until the appellant has recorded this variance and planned on the Suffolk County Registry of Deeds and submits document recording numbers and dates to the City Clerk and Building Inspector of the City of Revere. And the appellant must receive site plan review approval prior to applying for building permit. Shall the Zoning Board of Appeals grant the relief requested subject to those conditions? Mr. Lemina?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Lopes?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
Yes, and Chairman Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, the variance has been granted. There's no further business.
Having no further business, our next meeting will be, call it the chair, and I believe it's December 18th. Good evening.